My report ready?
Yeah. Okay, so normally we do not take action on a work agenda. But tonight, we are asking the board to take action under Finance for approval of a preliminary budget, and approval regarding maximum expenditures for travel reimbursement, and approval of a resolution regarding regular business travel for central office administrators. So I wanted to just speak to that first, specifically the approval of the preliminary budget for the 23-24 school year is preliminary because it needs to, we're asking the board's permission to approve it so that we can send it to County Superintendent. And just before that, I have a statement prepared that I would like to read. I'd like to let everyone know that as we went through the budget development process, we realized that significant changes.
Sorry, that was mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. We realized that significant changes will need to be made to our staffing levels. Unfortunately, this is due to rising costs in numerous areas that exceed the 2% tax levy cap, including but not limited to health insurance costs that cannot be offset with tax levy waivers, increased cost of transportation, increased costs in energy and salaries, coupled with being one of the only three districts in Bergen County to be subjected to a reduction in state aid to the tune of $603,000. The district must reduce the number of its employees. We simply cannot sustain the current level of staffing in the 23-24 budget. We have been taking a very hard look at where those cuts can be made. These decisions are very difficult, and they are subject to approvals of this budget by the county office. Once we have that county approval, we will have conversations with those individuals affected as soon as possible. And I'm sorry to be the bearer of such sad news, but I do want to shift to the good things that are going on in the district. First, I would like to congratulate Ms. Harefauer, Mr. Malupas, Ms. DiLorenzo, Ms. Ackerman, Mr. Pre, Mr. Murator, and the team of volunteers that worked to pull off, oh, Ms. Ferengi, and the team of volunteers at the middle school that worked to pull off a fantastic musical of Susical Jr. What a talented group of amazing kids. And it's, you know, it's important to mention too that I know Dan and his team worked with the young students to manage the lighting, and manage the sound, and the microphones, and manage backstage. They were so cute, and they were running around with their little ear things on and being so professional. And it was just so nice to see it all come back together. And I'm really proud of this team who haven't worked together. Most of these people are brand new or relatively new. Ms. Ackerman, DiLorenzo, and Mr. Malupas. And they pulled in the art students and the arts department. So I'm just really happy for them. It was a great show. March is Women's History Month. And that being said, I would just like to recognize the wonderful women leaders that I work with, and my women trustees on the Board of Education, and all of the women in district who dedicate their work and their lives to serving other people's children. I would like to remind everybody that the gala is slated for March 30th. And if you are still interested in buying tickets, I think you still can, newmilkfordfoundation.org, www.nu-milfordfoundation.org. You can get your tickets there, and if you can't attend, there's no donation that is too small. I would also like to thank the NMEA for their support of a great prize, which they always do that to support the foundation, and for their attendance, I believe they're sending an entire table. Tomorrow night, there is a CPAC meeting at 7:00 PM. I think everybody knows that we're all Irish on St. Patrick's Day, so have a great Friday night. And on Saturday, if you've survived Friday night, which I hope you all do, Saturday, we have the One Normal Night Alumni Concert at New Milford High School, which supports the Spring Musical. The alumni come back, and they perform, and the kids perform. And it's a lot of fun, and that's Saturday night at 7:00 PM. And you can get your tickets on the website, nmpsd.org will take you right there. And while you're there, you can buy tickets to the Addams Family, which will be in April. Okay. At Berkeley School, February's Character of the Month was Responsibility. Berkeley would like to recognize those students who demonstrated responsibility throughout the school and community. These are our special students. Kindergarten Nathaniel Fujashina. In first grade, Aria Babon. In second grade, Gabriel Alpar. In third grade, Clara San Pedro. In fourth, Pranaya Charetti. And in fifth, Milton Sorkin. The elementary schools have partnered with NBE Bank in New Milford to bring Teach Children to Save program to the schools. A representative from the bank presents to second and third grade students during the month of April, which is Financial Literacy Month. Berkeley students will be participating in the March Mathness, Math Fact Fluency Competition from March 6th through March 31st. And each week, the students will bring home a math fact fluency log to be completed, signed by a parent guardian, and returned to their teacher to earn class points. Class with the winning points at the end of the month will be the winner for their grade. I'm sure they'll excel in their profession. At Gibbs, congratulations to two fourth grade students, Quinn Tataro and Nyla Ahad. Both are finalists for the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey Fourth Grade Design a Folder Contest. The ceremony will be held virtually when they pick up, when they pick the winners. Both Gibbs and Berkeley celebrated in Pi Day on March 14th. Students were encouraged to dress up like Albert Einstein, and classes were paired up and assigned a read aloud activity. Grade level classes rotated through centers in their classroom, playing math games, and each class created an Albert Einstein collaborative poster. And I do have some photos of Mr. Coughlin dressed as Albert Einstein that I'm sure could be used as black or something. I'll post them on the Facebook page so everybody can see them. Today, we held our monthly Gibbs Gathering with a focus on responsibility. Ms. Corcoran led the students through a mindfulness activity. Students in the third and fourth grade put on skits about what it means to be responsible, and teachers and students worked together in a minute to win it game. This month, Ms. Dolan is hosting our annual March Madness. Notice that in the middle of March is A R T. March Madness Competition. This year's theme is Artists and Their Dogs. Each day, Mrs. Dolan posts two different paintings by two different artists on a bulletin board in the hallway. And during morning meeting, the classes vote for their favorite painting, and then that artist advances to the next round. On April 5th, Easy Ride Pedestrian Safety Program will take place for our students to discuss pedestrian and bike safety in preparation for the warm weather when it walks to school and rides to school. Okay. At David E. Owens, Hackensack University Medical Center was in to talk to all of the seventh and eighth graders about vaping and the dangers of this habit. And I just happened to ask a question at the high school where the same thing was happening today. I'm not sure if that was also Hackensack University Medical Center, but I know that it was through Bergen County Center. Students in high school and middle school received a message of lifelong learning and perseverance from the sixth rated MMA fighter whose ring name is The Spaniard. The quote, to quote one student, "Mr. D, this was the best assembly ever." And I know that when they were here, they took pictures, had opportunity to take pictures with the children, the kids. Students in our service learning club at DEO volunteered at Hannah's Closet. They donated clothing, and they spent time stocking shelves to support those in need of these donations. Students enjoyed our Minute to Win It event. When select students who participated in the PTO fundraiser had the opportunity to win cash prizes while competing in fun spirited games. $2 bills? Yeah, it was? That's great. We were happy to have New Jersey Water Environment Association come and talk to all of our seventh graders about the importance of clean water and sharing information about an essay contest we're participating in for our students as part of our science classes. In our advisory program, we finished reading our One Book, One School novel. Groups are now walking, working on creating a kindness project to improve the community and their school. And so far, they have positive teacher messages on the announcements, student-generated signs reminding peers to keep the space they occupy clean, welcoming, and easy to move in, and sharing inspirational messages with peers. Mr. Zalala will be a guest at one of my Coffee with the Superintendent Friends and talk about his, their initiative for One School, One Book. Students enjoyed the PTO, MAC. Retro dance. Municipal Align, thank you. Retro Dance Night, thank you to all the community members who made this great social event possible for our students. And finally, we have to give a shout out Jeremiah Marcos, who placed fourth in the State Spelling Bee Competition. At the high school, I'd like to announce the high school's Students of the Month. In grade nine, Kena Luisa. In grade 10, Eric Guaman. In grade 11, Asli Tulik. In grade 12, Naomi Hare. Ms. Fair took her ELL field trip students to the 9/11 Memorial Museum, and the photos will be posted on the website. Students from the New Milford High School have been appointed by our mayor to serve as student liaisons to the New Milford Municipal Align. The responsibilities will include attending our monthly meetings and the events and activities that we provide to the community. We know that Matt Olasio, Noelle Popinger, and Devin Ryan will be assets to our committee, and we look forward to working with them. Congratulations to Alec Kaplan on his second Gold Key Award in the Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. Wait, well, there's a photo here, so we'll post this too. See, there's attached photo from his opening reception at the Gallery of Farrow in Newark. The show will be up through March 25th. We wish Alec luck, and his photographs are up for the next round of judging at the national level. Five New Milford students, Jaden Simeone, Calice Suarez, Covenant Badness, Isabella Andrews, and Jonah Chaco, attended the Model UN Conference at Bergen Cagis. The conference had 600 students from across New Jersey come together to debate, develop position papers, negotiate past resolutions, and problem solve real world issues. There were 11 committees with New Milford students serving on the Social, Humanitarian, and Cultural Committee, Ad-Hoc Crisis Committee, and the JCC Soccer Wars. The New Milford students developed friendships and networked with these future leaders from around the state. Ms. Fenizia's Empty Bowl fundraiser raised over $3,000 for the Ascension Church Food Kitchen. Congratulations to her and her students for their hard work. Mrs. Taylor, our new business teacher, has provided outstanding learning opportunities for her students. Her personal financial literacy students are participating in the New Jersey Personal Finance Challenge, sponsored by the New Jersey Council for Economic Education. The contest runs February 24th through April 7th. In athletics, congratulations to Devin Ryan, who placed sixth at the NJSLA at the State Individual Wrestling Tournament. The winter season produced two league championships, bowling and wrestling, and a third place finish for the competition cheer team. Coach O'Fiero, Coach Cutiers, and Coach Berice were all honored for their seasons by their coaching peers in the county. More than 25 student athletes were honored as all-league, all-county, and/or all-state. Our annual Milford High School Athletic Department Golf Outing, for those of you who golf or would just like to support the scholarships, is June 26th. And our annual Pediatric Softball Classic is April 22nd. All the good stuff. So now, I have to give you obligatory suspension reports for February. No reports in Berkeley or Gibbs. One out of day suspension at the high school for vaping. And at the middle school, we have one, two, three, four. Out of school suspensions at the middle school. Four threats to the school. Misconduct, vaping on school property, and vaping on school property. And then one, two, three, four, five, six. In-school suspensions, four variety of things. Potential code conduct, misconduct, vandalism, misconduct, computer use violation, misconduct. And that's it. Suspension. Okay. HIV. New Milford High School. 16. I'm sorry. This is not, this is the, this is the half year report. Let me first do the February report, the half year report. I forgot, I do that twice a year. HIV at high school, February, none. At the middle school, four brought to the principal. Four forwarded for a full investigation. Four unfounded as bullying. Could have been code conduct. At Gibbs, none. At Berkeley, one brought to the principal for review. One forward for a full investigation. One unfounded. Now we did a half year report. New Milford High School, 16 HIV incidents. Six trainings. And three programs. Berkeley, three incidents. Seven trainings. Thirteen programs. Gibbs, six incidents. Five trainings. Six programs. David E. Owens, 12 incidents. Nine trainings. Four programs. Now, sometimes you will have more programs in one place than another because sometimes the programs are based on something that's going on in a certain grade with a certain group of kids or having problems at lunch. And so we will, you know, do something for a week in that space at that time. So the program should never be alarming. It's just a response to something that's going on to help prevent other incidences from occurring. And in the space where we had the most programs, we actually had a low number of incidents, so they were trying to get in front of it. Okay, so that's all the dirty business. And I think that is the end of my report. Any questions? Okay, so it's been Superintendent Curriculum Instruction Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I was gonna start tonight with the testing update for you. So all of our students in 11th grade with the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or NJGPA. And you and I have spoken about this assessment before. This assessment is aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Grade 10 English, Algebra I, and Geometry. The assessment is delivered on the same platform that students use each spring for the NJSLA, or New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. And it consists of two units in ELA and two units in math. So while our 11th graders were set and scheduled to begin the NJGPA yesterday, Tuesday, March 14th, we did experience a technical issue in the morning, which prevented most of our students from actually beginning the assessment. They were able to log in and see the start button, but they were not able to click the start button. So all hands were on deck, and we were trying to troubleshoot and resolve the issue following a call with Pearson Support, as well as hands-on support from our entire technology department, as well as our school testing coordinator, Ms. Peter Hunt, and high school administrators, Mr. Manny Felli and Mr. Prony. We had finally identified the issue and were able to find a resolution for it. However, the students were sitting for a bit of time, so we decided to suspend testing for yesterday and just begin the launch of Unit 1 today. So we invited students this morning to enjoy a nice breakfast, 11th graders before they were going into the testing. And I'm happy to report that today's testing session ran much more smoothly and went off without a hitch. We will continue testing tomorrow and Friday, as well as Monday, and then use Tuesday, your Friday of next week for makeups. Just as a reminder, in July of last year, Governor Murphy signed legislation which requires the State Board of Education to administer the NJGPA as a field test for the class of 2023. There is no graduation assessment requirement for any student who is expected to graduate as part of the class of 2023. The graduation requirements for the classes of 2024 and 2025 remain intact, and I previously shared them, and they are available on our website. If there's any changes in that area, I'd truly update you. Today, March 15th, is Digital Learning Day, a day to recognize how educators across the country are utilizing digital learning tools to create authentic connections and personalized learning opportunities for every student everywhere. It's recognized globally, and it's about making connections between educators and students. All of our business classes, under the leadership of Mrs. Taylor, I almost thought you were stealing my bullet on the spot. Our business teacher at the high school participated in Digital Learning Day. Mrs. Taylor planned meaningful learning activities for students, including the use of Google's Teachable Machine Tools to help students identify gender inequalities in computer science fields. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Taylor for planning this. I also know that she shared resources for other content area teachers to tap into in recognition of Digital Learning Day. And I believe I've shared before that the New Jersey Student Learning Standards are currently being revised for English Language Arts and Mathematics. This has been ongoing. The State Board of Education at their last meeting, it was two weeks ago, presented, there was an update that was presented, and I shared it with the leadership team, as well as some of our teachers who were doing that curriculum work. We are anticipating that the new standards or revised standards are released in August of this year, so August of 2023, with implementation in September of 2024. So that will give us a full year of planning. And that work is usually, we will do it collaboratively. I will sit with teams of teachers, and we will look at existing curriculum, we will give the revised standards, and make the necessary revisions. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Any questions?
Ms. Larson, any changes to the curriculum that they permanen? Is it anticipated as like major changes or are they usually perentual?
So based on the update that this state provided, there's not going to be, it doesn't look like there's going to be major changes. It looks like there's going to be some new standards in some areas. The biggest change looks like in the areas of math, there, we have measurement and data as one of the domains, and they're now breaking that into measurement and then data literacy. So that would probably be the biggest change for us as far as looking at our units of study and thinking about how we are. We do have Computer Science and Design Thinking standards. So we haven't seen the standards yet for data literacy, but there may be some crossover. I think the content, the rationale is that the content in measurement and data, you know, was worthy of kind of breaking those out a little bit further and unpacking it into two areas. I'm not sure if it was like 2007 or 2008 when the Common Core standards came out. That was probably the most dramatic shift anybody has ever seen in standards. And then they sort of quickly abandoned that and created their own to reflect many of the skills that are in the Common Core. That was, that was the biggest shift. And I don't even do that anymore. Ever since then, it's been like little, little things.
Yeah, that's a rude question because it take the teachers, the staff a long time to really understand how to teach it.
Well, that's why we have ongoing professional development. I mean, it's something that we're always looking at. In all of the professional development, we're looking at standards. And sometimes something will go from, oh, this used to be mastery in grade three, and now it's mastery in grade two. So sometimes there's like a little shift in that. But if we really focus on standards when we're working with the teachers, so they should know their standards inside out and backwards. And if there's like one change, two changes, they know what they are because they're the only two changes on the list. Or in some cases, there's things that like we've already figured out that might need to be changed, and then the state.
Oh, gets on the bandline.
Monic skills.
Right. We've had monics for forever. Correct. They weren't in the standard.
That will be in the new update. A long time.
Don't flip your eyes on her.
Just.
Give us the administrative report. Dr. Pichard?
So the audit is in its final stages. We should have it, the auditor presented by next meeting. Well, now I went on record and said it. So I'm going to have to hold them to it. It's going to be during next meeting. We've also been in the early stages of Creative Transportation Solutions. I feel like I'm constantly providing updates on this. But we recently had to shift our routes again. And so we appreciate the patience of our families and teachers and instructional assistants as we work through some of those changes. And the timing on routes are always changing. And everyone has been understanding and patient and accommodating as we work through those. Yesterday, I met with R. Coblen and Nelson Patterson to renew and look and make sure that we have all our insurance cover issues in place for next year. And then I just wanted to talk about the two major facility projects that are on the horizon and really need to be completed as soon as possible. And the one is the Berkeley Street Elementary School Roofing Project. It's currently out to bid. The bids are due next week. Doesn't mean that the board has to accept anything for the project to be completed this summer. And the reason it's out already is because of the timeline. That if we were going that route, that we would need to have a lead time on materials and contractor in place because the only time that we can do that is a very short window in the summer when we don't have any programs and students, faculty, staff in that building.
We're bringing. We're bringing.
There's, right, things that can happen. We also have a need for the high school auditorium last summer, right before the summer musical took place. The air conditioner did not work. It's a two compressor unit. Our in-house people, with the help of contractors, were able to get one compressor running. We're not confident on the lifespan of that. And so we're looking at a replacement for that. As soon as I have more information, I will share that with you.
And that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer. Any questions? Okay. The liaison and board committee reports. Paige Ryan?
I have the mayor and council meeting. So I was unable to attend the meeting on Monday because we had a committee meeting. But from the previous mayor and council meeting, our superintendent, Ms. Shanley, presented the plan for the profile of a New Milford graduate. And it was a great presentation. And hopefully, a lot of people watched it from there. But asked for community involvement and assistance and explained that we would be sharing links to, for people to show, if they're show interest in participating. Right? And it's open to the whole community, not just the school community because that can be sent from us directly. So I think it was well received by all of the mayor and council because that's all who was left when it was time for her to do her presentation.
I don't take it for her.
But we also did see a lot of, many of our police officers, sergeants, detectives, all honored. Tenants, I'm sure I forgot the rank, were all honored in, for their service and for certain merit, merit commendations they were given. But also hired a new officer who was in his training, but because he came from another community where he had a great deal of training, they believe that he'll be out and ready to go in a very short period of time. Seymour can probably get a little bit more on that in these meetings. So it was really good. And I think that also, which I didn't, I don't know if I mentioned in the last one, they also approved certain signs that you see around high school for traffic patterns where there are no turns. It was communicated to our parents and families. You shouldn't turn, you shouldn't park, and all that. But now there are actual signs for that. So I don't know if it's improved. I guess we'll have to see. Yeah. So that was that. Also, for the ADHOC Bylaws Committee, I shared the minutes. And we continue to go through that. We reviewed eight bylaws. Five of them will require updates. The specific updates are noted in that. And in the minutes, I've also shared the link so you can see what those are, few clips in. We also discussed as a committee, because when we were going over the bylaws, we started to just talk about the board, you know, function in general. And we discussed the use of electronic devices during the meetings. We don't explicitly, I don't really know here, we don't explicitly state the use of this in any of our bylaws. But, and this is something that I brought up. So currently, though, because we go paperless-ish, right? We do get an agenda when we come in, but all of our other materials are paperless. It is something that we would use. You know, we have our hard laptops or devices in here. So it definitely is a need in the meeting. However, we need to somehow make sure that as board members, there's no communications via our phones or within the, within our electronic devices with each other or the community while we're in a meeting because it is an open meeting. So all of that communication has to happen out in public. And I know it's challenging because there's a lot of people that are watching on the video. And they may want to say something to you because they know you. So they may text, but we can't do that as a board. So we did bring that up. How we need to address that as a bylaw or a policy, we still need to figure out how that gets addressed. It's not singling out any one person. It just becomes an issue when we, you know, when we start to do that. Especially because once you use your communication device, it is subject to Oprah. Because if someone sees you on your phone in a meeting and they can ask to see what you were doing in that meeting, and now even your personal communications become public. So we just really have to think about that when we're here. And I am guilty of hearing the phone vibrate and taking a look to see what it is. So I didn't even take it out this time. Also, we had asked for Dr. Pichard to do a little research to let us know if there are any bylaws or anything else that exists in that way. So we'll get that information. We also briefly discussed one of our bylaws, one seven four, around legal services. And there were questions to board members regarding that bylaw. So we want to clarify. That only designated persons can directly contact the board attorney. It does say that in the bylaw. All board members, trustees, have open access to reach out to the New Jersey School Board Attorney of the Day, which they have similar information. They're members, we can do that. Any one of us can do that at any time. However, it doesn't cost any additional resources because it's included in our dues. However, reaching out to our attorney does cost us. So in the bylaw, in accordance with that, we designate administrative staff members to review all legal bills. And we designate a contact person to ensure the prudent use of that legal service. So we designated the superintendent and business administrators as a contact. So we've done that because this could cause additional costs to the district. So when we look at this bylaw, because we haven't gotten to that one yet, just wanted to bring it up because it was a question, I think, from someone to one of the committee members. So it's not that only the president gets to contact the attorney and nobody else does. It's that anyone can contact New Jersey School Board Attorneys to ask legal questions. But if we want a question to go to our attorneys, we need to go through the president and the superintendent and its business administrator. Just wanted to clarify that. Also, we're going to meet again in March. We didn't set a date because there's a lot of meetings. We did recommend adding language to align the Strauss Esme. We updated the conduct of a board meeting to reflect adjustments to the agenda order. So it didn't go in the same order that we had. We did that. And also align the public comment time. We had it in the remote board meetings as three minutes that everyone was allowed. But in our, in our in-person meetings, it still says two. So we recommend aligning the in-persons at three, to align both so that they both have a number of minutes. And then finally, on the declared emergency or the public participation, yeah, so that part. Also, one last thing which is not highlighted in here is that we ask the public to state their name and address. And what we are recommending is to change it to state their name and town of residence so that their address is not listed. Not that you can't look somebody up, but we want to avoid that as well. So that was it from the bylaws. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I have a question. Just regarding the electronic devices. I mean, was it discussed maybe only using the Chromebooks that are here? At least the use. I remember when I first started, they used to be charging Chromebooks. And so.
Yeah, we gave them.
Okay, well, that was the thing. Is that I'm going to prevent some way of just using that communication?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the name and address then. If I'm not mistaken, I'm in the council meeting a little while. But I think that they require name and address.
They actually changed it.
They did. Okay, that's for us again. So we remind them or so then there you go.
And again, I can ask Councilwoman Seymour when he gets a chance to speak. But I, when I was at the meeting and they asked, I had a question about something, and they said name and address and, oh. Oh, okay. Name. And that was it. But I think that as a board, we should at least make sure that.
They're a resident.
They're saying that they're a New Milford resident versus a resident outside of New Milford, so.
So if they are a resident from outside, they still, do they, they still can?
If they speak, but we need to.
We just want to know.
Know. Right? Yeah, we should know. Because it did happen recently. Somebody came and offered to sell something. But anyway, they, so, yes. But to answer your question, that's what spurred this recommendation. Okay, then the last one is the Finance and Facilities Committee. So we did have a meeting on Monday. We did have a closed session this evening prior to this meeting. So most of those topics were discussed. But as far as the committee report is concerned, we discussed the loss of state aid, the budget planning that is presented to the board to approve for this evening, all of the increase in costs and, and other, other items that are impacting that. We also discussed the facilities needs, which the business administrator has already brought up. So those two were brought up as well. And that the approval of this preliminary budget would have to happen this evening because it needs to be submitted on March twentieth. And I did have in here my notes, which says the audit was still in process. But now that we've got a commitment from the business administrator that will submit at the next meeting, that'll be an update to that as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other reports? Nicole down?
The Athletics Committee met on Monday as well. And a lot of the things that I was going to mention, Mrs. Shanley had reported out from high school.
It was from Mr. Riggelli. I just read the good news.
So a lot of it was just dates, updates on the winter sports. What was, if there was any updates for the baseball. But one thing that I did want to mention is that what was, it's nice to see that on April seventeenth, Mr. Riggelli told us that the high school would actually be playing Park Ridge at Rock and Boulder Stadium just to kind of like, like a night game, things under the lights. The, he brought up the pediatric cancer tournament as well. And that a lot of the girls are, they're going to be using night field. And that they're hopeful to use even the barbara so that like they can enjoy night games and bring up better, more spectators to the games. He also spoke about like football, that this is year two. They'll be being at the Jets facility as well. And they're actually looking to do like an all-star team amongst the conference at the High School North and South. Sorry. Senior banners maybe have for the sprint athletes. And the other part that I wanted to bring up was that Mr. Riggelli was trying to encourage more student involvement with streaming. So on fresh start days, he was doing like an outreach program to try to get more students involved because I think the current student is a junior. So trying to somebody to like see what that role pertains to. And that he was going to try to actually livestream baseball games. They're going to attempt that from center field, I think they said. So the one positive from COVID was the ability to livestream. And I know personally, when I was homesick, being able to watch my son play, or wrestle, virtually was great. And I know like a lot of parents and families that are not local. I think Mr. Riggelli said there was a family out of country that the grandparents emailed him and said that like that whole livestream was just fantastic. Otherwise, they would have never seen their grandchildren play. And the rest of the information that we discussed, I shared with the board, I think, this morning. And it's in my drive. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out.
Any questions?
I do have one question. And I don't know if it was discussed. So the softball trip is coming up. Is that true, the, what we approved? Or didn't we approve for them to go to the spring break, right?
I'm not, I don't have the dates off the top of my head. But.
Fourth spring break. I feel like it's the fourth.
Right? It wasn't discussed at the beginning. Yeah, no, it wasn't.
I mean, we approved it.
Yes, yes, yes. If it's all still. As far as I know, yes. I haven't been told otherwise. The only trip that was postponed was the Ecuador.
Yeah.
Don't miss that. Next Thursday.
I have a bus.
You have a bus?
We were able to accommodate them on a bus. So there we would hear this in the morning.
Okay, great.
Before spring break.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Nicole? Any other committee OEs?
So just quickly, could I enter SBA, which is very imposing? April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, it's a virtual event. And they're going to talk about topics that are important to the board, public relations, school law briefings, advocacy updates, et cetera. So that's something that you can register for, to attend virtually. The other thing is negotiations. I'm not going to say what we talk about, but we do exist. We're on a meeting. And we are working. So I just wanted to. Yeah, we're the, the committee that remains silent. Silent. But we are, we are here. So that's it.
Okay. It says correspondence on here.
I do have to put correspondence, something up with the board. I have them for everyone.
A little matters. A little matter.
Yeah, that's a fix of our.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence. It's from Robert McNash regarding shipping containers.
Okay, thank you. We'll pass it at the end. Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we do have a plan for those. When do we talk about that? If you want to share that now, you can.
Okay.
So there's a large shipping container on the property of David E. Owens that is used regularly for lawn equipment and variety of things. It's on the prettiest thing on the side of the road. So we are going to have students under the supervision, art students under the supervision of the teacher, paint it because we need it.
paint it because we need it. And if we move it, it'll be in front of somebody else's house. So we're going to have them paint it and hopefully blend it into the space so that it looks like it's outside. We're not going to paint it like the Partridge Family bus or anything like that. Going to have, be aesthetically pleasing in this space because we need it. And to move it will be, you know, an expense and an event. And then the question would be, to where do we move it? And whose house is it in front of next? So that's what, that's the solution.
Okay. Finance and facilities committee, Paige Ryan?
I did.
She said.
Are we moving on to anything?
Well, we did, we did. I'll see if I can. Okay.
Well, because this is a work session, we don't have, Nelson's got a public portion. But we do have, I bet I think we should, yeah, what I was saying is, yes, but it's after. So I think it's to the 20 points. Usually we do open to the public, finding this agenda before the items on the agenda. So since we have a work session, I, I, since we made a motion to move the open to the public to now.
Okay.
A motion to move it to, I'm making a motion to move the open to the public to now.
Anyone want to second it? Tom, you passed them? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Okay, now you can hold them.
Okay. I'd like to open to the public any items that are on the agenda? Any?
No comment.
Do you have any comments?
Nope.
What was that?
We just did, yeah.
I knew this was on the agenda. We made a motion to move it. And then she did.
Open to the public. Yeah.
Okay, so now I seek a motion to close the public, so.
I apologize, Stephanie just needs to know who motioned to open.
It was John Gossen and seconded by Cheryl Calmbrow.
So motion to close.
Motion to close. Paige Ryan, Cheryl Calmbrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good point, I got confused. Okay, so finance and facility committee, Paige Ryan?
I make a motion for approval for F 22 dash 23 point 137, point 138, 10 point 139. Motion.
Give me a second. Nicole Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so agenda items for discussion. Review of the tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held on March 20, 2023. Any questions regarding board action? No comments? Ms. Shanley?
I would just like to bring to everyone's attention BA 22 dash 23 point 7. Approval of revised 22, 23 district school calendar. That is this year's school calendar. We are revising it because we discovered an error. We had two blackout dates, if you want to call them. That's what we call them here. Those are the dates that we've set on the calendar so that we have unused emergency closing days to give back. That we don't schedule anything for those days because we would just be able to close schools and then not have to cancel things. So we had three in gray. We were only supposed to have two. And they are supposed to be, the first one being Juneteenth and the second one, which is June 19th. And the second one being May 26th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day. So it was incorrect and we're just correcting it here. And, you know, hopefully, if the weather works the way it's supposed to be working, the way it's been working, we will hopefully see both of those days come into fruition. So that's, that's why that correction is there.
Anyone else have any comments or questions for board action? Any comments or questions for educational programs and curriculum? Any comments or questions for personnel recommendations?
So I just wanted, I did have some questions. I don't know if you got my email. Almost.
I did.
Okay.
And I'm so sorry. You can, you can answer me after. I can answer you after.
Okay.
That's it.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments for finance and facilities? Any questions or comments for athletic school curriculum? Dylan?
22 dash 23 eighteen. So did something change? And then it says motion second, vote passed. I'm just not really sure that it's.
Well, now, now we are actually naming all of the chaperones. At the time, we didn't know the names of all the chaperones. And I think there are actually a few extra parent chaperones on this trip than in the original request. But sometimes that happens based on the needs of your student population. You need additional people for a variety of things. So these are the names. And we're still waiting, as you can see, on criminal history parents to people. That's why we put pending because if it doesn't come through, then they don't go.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments for policy? Any questions or comments for ad hoc bylaws? Old business? New business? Okay, open to the public as outlined in the New Milford Board of Education by law 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Take a motion. Joe Liddon, seconded by Stephanie Kaufnager. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions from the public? Jonathan? Do you want to say anything?
Oh, sure, I just have to talk to the liaison board.
I just want to say when I was at the mayor and council meeting, every time David looked, they're like, from the public. And I was the only one and I kept saying, I said to him, I don't know how you feel.
We would like at some point to come up and speak.
Yeah.
More than invited to.
Somebody can give me something to say.
It's great to see everybody. And I would also like to thank Ms. Shanley for coming to our mayor council meeting and giving a fantastic presentation. Thank you very much for that, it's greatly appreciated.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And I would also like to give thanks to our municipal allies who once again did an absolutely outstanding job in presenting, putting together and organizing another Black Lumin Day event in memory of those who lost to addiction. So I can't give enough thanks and credit for the fantastic work that they do. Not just that event, but every event that they do during the year. Very important work. Looking ahead to March 22nd. At seven o'clock in the evening at Earl Ball, we're going to have our first crescent moon lighting for Ramadan. And it will remain lit for the duration of Ramadan. And on April 1st, we'll be in the Easter egg hunt at Knights Field at seven o'clock in the morning, which we're very excited to, to examine, I don't know what my daughter is. And I would also just mention, even though it's not specifically for our related, for anyone who's interested or knows anyone who's interested, our symposium panel will be presenting a symposium around the college at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 28th, in the Tresse Pavilion. And as we move along from program to program, symposium to symposium, we're getting increasingly more focused. This year's topic is specifically college dating. And college dating violence in particular will involve a very heavy discussion involving sex crimes, sexual assaults. And to that end, we're going to be empaneled by several members of the prosecutor's office SBU team. They're all fantastic. We're very humbled to welcome them to our team. And we're also going to be discussing stalking in detail as well in light of recent events both here in Brooklyn County and in other parts of the country, Idaho earlier this year. The issue of stalking has come up again and again and again in our, in our creative starting sessions. And looking ahead to the fall in New Milford, in October, we're going to be discussing teen dating violence. And I would also point out, up until this point, we've discussed domestic violence and its aftermath. We're now pivoting and changing the paradigm to discuss prevention and prevention strategies and hopefully educate and inform students, families and the entire community how we can all better work together to identify the red flags earlier before things escalate to try to prevent violence. So I just continue to thank the board and the district for your tremendous support. And each member of our panel, and I speak to them also, extends their sincere thanks to all of you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I'm here. Seek a motion to close to the public. Paige Ryan, seconded by Tony Albra. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We board member request for additional information. Okay, I seek a motion to adjourn. Stephanie Kaufnager, seconded by Cheryl Calmbrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We go to next meeting.